Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming here tonight. We are calling to order the August 2024 Meeting of North Bend City Council. Can Clerk please call roll?
Mayor Protem Allen Godhath.
Here.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Torgason.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tramalata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Will the Clerk please lead us in the flag salute? Okay, well, again, thank you, everybody. Welcome, whether you're online or not, in person. We all enjoy having you here. So let's begin. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I would like to announce that AB 24-076 Motion Authorizing Contract with CPSM for Police Services Study has been moved from consent agenda to the main agenda for discussion. Additionally, I would like to announce that an executive session to discuss performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101G has been added to the end of tonight's agenda. We will now move on to consent agenda. We have 10 items on our consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Uh, can I get a second? Motion being my, this, uh, let's see, who's that? You're running for office, Cullen, and second by Mr. Trump, Mr. Uh, Elwood. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Before we move on to citizen comments, as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you are attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off, fax, email, or e- or or email to sopadall@northbendwau.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. We are no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom unless they have reached out to the city clerk in advance of the meeting to request accommodation. All right, we will now move on to citizens' comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that is not on our agenda, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. If you have requested accommodations with a city clerk and wish to speak during citizen comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Uh, please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. All right, thank you. Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor Merrill Miller and
Very much.
city council members. Um, I'm Jean Buckner, 46226, Southeast 139th Place, North Bend, Washington. And I'm here to talk about a potential alternative to the proposed, what we hear is an auto mall for the lot next to the truck town. And I have presented this concept before. I presented it to, uh, city staff on April 19th. Uh, one, one staff. I presented it to the Planning Commission on August 17th, I mean, August 7th. And I'd like to discuss this concept here and now with you, uh, so that you'll know that there is this potential alternative to the auto mall in the works. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that the development agreement that we've read and had reviewed on the auto mall is what we believe to be inaccurate in places as well as problematic for the city. Uh, we believe that it includes components that are illegal, essentially. Um, but that isn't necessarily for today's session because I don't believe you guys have even taken a look at that development agreement yet. That was passed, by the way, at the, uh, commission, Planning Commission, uh, on the 7th. So, um, this concept that we're working on, and it's when I say "we", I mean, a group of large and small environmental groups, land trust-type folks, and developers. We think that it has potential tax revenue for the city as a whole. Some of the components might include, and it's still open for, obviously, discussion and input. Uh, but it would be called the Gateway to the Middle Fork Park. And it would include open space for the elk. It would include a facility that inside would be kind of a backpacky place where you would have things like a rock wall, indoor skiing, uh, places where folks could learn to ski, a daycare for parents that might be heading to the slopes in Snoqualmie Pass with their older kids, and they need a place to put their young tots while they're skiing and then come back, pick up the young tots, go into the city and have dinner. That's the concept. The concept also tries to integrate the city with the area east of town and would include things like transportation and buses, not unlike what Seattle's doing now or King County, where they're taking the buses to all the various trailheads. Well, this would move folks from the city to this location, the trailheads, and back. This location would also include potentially things like, I'm sorry, I think that my time's up. Could I have another minute, folks?
No, unfortunately not. I'm sorry, Jean.
Okay.
Everything. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, anybody else? Well, welcome.
Hello, hello. I haven't been here for a while. We've had a busy summer, so I'm Deborah Landers, 14615, 438th Avenue, Southeast in North Bend. Here again, talking about North Bend art and industry, and I just wanted to share that we had a busy and fun summer. We had a festival, we had, um, numerous art classes. We helped a slew of artists find positions that were financially beneficial for them um, throughout both the Snoqualmie Valley and the Issaquon-Seattle area. And then, uh, we, we did something exciting because we've been wanting to start some children's programs. So we had three days of art classes for children that were free during the summer, and they, of course, were full, and parents were super excited about it. So we're really eager to begin doing more of those types of uh, classes and opportunities for all ages, but we've kind of missed some of the young folks right now. So, coming up, our Makers Meetup is going to start again in September. It's always the third Wednesday of the month. Makers Meetup is when, um, creative folks can just gather, they can bring their own art project and work on it, or they can work on a art project that we provide, and everyone can participate in. It gives them a chance to network, learn from each other, and mentor each other in different types of art. Super popular. We just, uh, slowed it down for the summer, uh, because frankly, our classroom is really hot in the summer. So the next things that are coming up, we, throughout the summer, we continue to do our youth writing program. Um, that is with, in collaboration with the King County Library System and is held at the Snoqualmie Library up on the ridge. Um, there's several young writers that are consistently going and new ones coming all the time. We're getting ready to reinvigorate that now as school begins to, to encourage more young writers to uh, creatively use their words as an outlet. And we have also reinvigorated our own writing programs. So, um, this too is in collaboration with the King County Library with the North Bend Service. So at, uh, the North Bend Library, they'll do two, two days a month, um, as write-ins, and this is where authors come, and they just take some quiet time to write. They get some mentoring, they get some coaching, get some ideas about writing, and start to learn about things like editing and, and publishing. So they do that at the library, and then we'll be doing that one day a week, or one day a month at our facility also. So I wanted to share those things, and that's all I have. Thank you all so much for your support. Goodbye.
Thank you, as always, Deb. And anybody else here to have any commentary tonight, either online or in person?
Online, we do. Mike Thomas.
Fantastic. I'm Michael. You're somewhere out there, I take it.
Good, yeah.
I can't hear you. Can you hear him? Okay. Michael, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SE. I wanted to, um, add a few comments to, uh, Mrs. Buckner's earlier comments around the, um, proposed, uh, development agreement that was approved at the previous, uh, Planning Commission for, you know, what were, was one of the parcels associated with the National Guard, which really appears to be, you know, backing off. I was personally concerned with the amount of concessions given to that development, um, agreement, and I know the council has yet, it has yet to be formally presented. You know, for example, a 50% reduction in stormwater and traffic impact fees is really premature. Uh, there's no master plan out there. I didn't see substantial items in the development that described it. So frankly, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to maybe take a step back as both a city, um, and as a community, just to think about what, what might be, um, that might work out there. And this is not the first time I've heard of Gateway to the Middle Fork. In fact, I believe two mayors ago that, uh, Ken, a hearing, had proposed such an idea. And I think that idea has a lot of merit. Uh, the Middle Fork Road has tremendous, um, outdoor recreation opportunities. You have King County, you have DNR, and you have US Forest Service lands. I think a, um, uh, you know, a mixed-use commercial-public-park, um, with some commercial attractions on it sounds very interesting. Um, you know, rock climbing, a ice rink, um, you know, are there other also, um, public uses that could be relocated out there? And perhaps, uh, their properties redeveloped, for example, the Snoqualmie Ranger Station. Now, would that be closer to the Middle Fork for maintenance and provide, you know, an opportunity for the Ranger Station education? Do we want to leave some open land out there, you know, perhaps as elk preservation? How about a little bit of, uh, mixed, uh, sports retail? Ice rink, climbing wall, maybe a little in, indoor or outdoor, um, dining or entertainment? Um, what about relocating the museum? Uh, museum also is, um, is, uh, you know, quite age, I very much appreciate the museum. You know, could it benefit from a new location? Would it be nicer to have a new historical educational center, you know, out there? And again, that property redeveloped, which is, um, my mind, highly valuable commercial real estate next to downtown Core. So anyway, I would hope that folks would, uh, give some consideration to what should be out there. The National Guard is not coming. What can be out there? Um, you know, and, uh, you know, I understand that we're all looking for economic development or other things, but, uh, perhaps this is a moment to take a pause as to what vision we want as a city, what we want as citizens out there that works for that site. And perhaps, you know, playing to our strengths as a natural resource, you know, recreation area is not a bad strategy. Thank you, and this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else online?
Bree. No one at this time.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Item number 12, introduction of North Bend police officers. Tonight, we have Police Chief Brian Lynch. Oh, that looks like Captain Gary Horacey. Present and introduce our new police officers. Uh, Gary, Gary, would you be so kind to come to the podium? Look at you go. Not your first rodeo.
Not my first rodeo.
We're so happy you're here.
Thank you. Mayor Miller, council members, um, those in attendance and those online that are attending. I have with me four of our newest officers, um, that have graduated the academy or in our field training program. Um, I'm gonna start with Officer Bostick, and, um, he's grown up in the area. He's from Bellevue. Um, he went to, after graduating high school, he joined the, uh, military after, uh, earning a Army scholarship and going to the University of Washington. Um, after serving in the Army in, uh, North Carolina, he was moved back to Washington at JBLM, and after deciding to exit the military, pursued his career in law enforcement. Uh, we're very fortunate that he chose to uh, apply for the Snoqualmie Police Department. I got to attend his graduation in June, where he, where it was probably one of the best moments I've seen for a agency because not only was he received a lot of awards from the academy, he was the number one overall student in that academy class. Um, he has a wife, uh, Michaela, and a daughter, Isabel. They, they love this area, and, you know, it's, we're lucky to have him. He's in his final phase of FTO, so we're hoping to have him out on the road soon on his own. Um, next, I'm gonna go to Officer Rasmussen. Eric was born in New York, grew up in New York. Um, when he was a young kid, he attended a youth police academy that kind of sealed his desire to become a cop and um, serve his community. He went to the Rockland Community College, where he, uh, also interned for the Rockland District Attorney's Office and furthered his desire to be a public servant. After graduating, he joined the Army. Um, he's got quite of an extensive, um, history with the military. He was a team leader, a sniper team leader, a vehicle commander, and a marksman instructor. Uh, he was moved out here to JBLM, where he fell in love with Washington and his state, and we're very fortunate to have him here. Uh, he loves us, both cities, the beauty of them. Um, and I have to note, he graduated in the same class as Max, and he was number two overall. So that was a very awesome, uh, presentation to hear Snoqualmie Police Department, Snoqualmie Police Department, you know, multiple times over during that graduation. Our third is Officer Jesse Westman. He grew up in the area. He was, grew up just down the road in Preston, went to school in Issaquah. Um, he comes to us with some service with the King County Sheriff's Department prior to coming to us, and he is also in his third phase of FTO and has been, you know, all of them have been an, an added blessing to the agency. They're positive and looking, you know, just constantly looking forward. Um, and our last one, Officer Hoya, Hoyla. Uh, Kobe grew up in Auburn. He loves sports, especially football. He's very competitive with sports. Um, he's told me a couple of times how his friends don't like playing with him because of how competitive he is. Uh, you can kind of see that in just his day-to-day interactions. He's just, he's that guy. He wants to be out there. He wants to do right, wants to do good work, and he strives. Um, he graduated in July and is in his second phase of FTO, and we're looking forward to moving him on, and I'll give each one of them a moment to kind of say something to y'all. I think overall, they've all had a strong desire to be public servants, and it shows in the work that they're putting forward in their training program right now. So, Max?
Uh, thanks for being here, everybody. Uh, don't really have too much to say, but I just want to thank, uh, Chief Lynch, as well as the City of North Bend, for giving me this opportunity, and I certainly look forward to serving the wonderful residents and what then. Thank you.
Uh, just repeating what he said, it's hap- happy to be here. Been having a good time so far. That's a beautiful city. Appreciate the support that we get. So just thanks for the opportunity.
Hi, everybody. Um, just like they said, really happy to be here. I grew up in the area. Um, I love North Bend. I love Snoqualmie, and I'm just, um, I'm just really happy to be here. It's a dream come true to be able to be a police officer in the place that I grew up, and I wouldn't have it any other way. So, thanks for having me here.
I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity, uh, Chief Lynch, Chief and Captain Horacey. Um, I appreciate you guys for coming out. Can't wait to, I hope, make a better impact on this community all the time. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, officers, and thank you, Captain, for the introductions. Uh, council, do you have any questions or comments to make for our fabulous new officers? Brendan, lead off, please.
Very nice to meet you, um, and thank you for your service, uh, for our country as well as our community. I'm very happy to see you on the roads. I know, uh, our police department has had a great impact in the community, and so you're joining an awesome team already, which will now become even more awesomer, if that's a word. Um, but thank you very much for picking Snoqualmie, and great job on the recruiting. Thank you, Captain, and thank you, Chief Lynch.
Thank you, Brendan. Anybody else from council? Ms. Cullen?
I agree. Thank you so much. We're so lucky to have you, and I would like to challenge you to pickleball. I'm just kidding.
I think I can confirm that you just said that even. Well, how about a good game of golf? We can do that here. Really? You're nodding your head? Oh, be careful. We're gonna have fun with that. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from council? Okay, oh, Ellen, excuse me.
Just want to thank you for stepping up and both in service and everything and to this community. So appreciate you being here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Alan Wonderful and Christine.
So ditto on the, the welcome, and we're glad to have you, and we're grateful for JBLM for bringing, uh, some of you to the Puget Sound area, and we're grateful for the others who chose to stay here in the Puget Sound and join us here in North Bend. So thank you.
Thank you, Christina, and Mark.
Uh, simply want to extend a warm welcome as well. We very much appreciate your dedication and service, and, uh, best of luck as you uh, move forward in your careers here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I might just add, I love the enthusiasm in front of me. I, I know that these two gentlemen, I, I was able to go to your graduation. Uh, I mean, just that you hit top and second, first and second was just enough to win me over anyway, but you're great human beings. Can't wait to meet you more, you gentlemen right there, and if you have a moment, I'll be up for a photo op, and we're gonna have a great time, right, Bree? Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm just gonna say real quick, thank you to all of you. I appreciate all of your service, and I, I'm super gr- grateful that you guys are here. So thanks.
Thank you again, gentlemen. It's wonderful. Uh, we will
Uh, there was a regular meeting of the North Bend Community and Economic Development Committee, uh, earlier today in the adjournment room. Uh, we discussed, uh, school impact fees. Ryan Stokes, the Chief Financial Officer for the School District, uh, was with us. Uh, we discussed the Middle Fork Property Development, uh, agreement. Those will both be coming, uh, to you in future council meetings. Uh, we discussed amendments to the city uh, charter about, uh, mobile home park amendments to bring it in line with existing, uh, RCWs, sort of a housekeeping matter. And we also took a brief look at, uh, properties that the city owns, uh, within the city of North Bend, just to make sure we're current on the current land holdings. Uh, our next meeting will be, uh, the third Tuesday next month. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Uh, Mr. Elwood, would you kindly give us some information about FNA, Finance and Administration, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The FNA committee met August 13th at 4:00 PM in the adjournment room to my left. Uh, the topics that we discussed was Washington State Fish and Wildlife Annex, Lease Renewal, uh, FCS Group Tax Increment Financing Analysis Contract, Lease Services Study and Contract, and, uh, Q2 Financial Status Report. Our next meeting will be September 10th, uh, at 4:00 PM in the adjournment room as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. And Ms. Rustic, would you provide the report for Public Health and Safety, please?
Yes, the, uh, August 6th Public Health and Safety Committee meeting was canceled. Um, but the council and mayor and city did support the National Night Out, uh, joint effort with the police and the fire, and it was very well attended.
That was fun. Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Cullen, Transportation Public Works, please.
Yes, so we had nine items on our agenda versus our usual 10. So number one was Don Deverg. We talked about the resolution approving surplus of the wastewater treatment plant equipment. Number two, we talked about resolution granting water easement to Slough Water Association across Dahlgrann Family Park for Inerty Water Booster Station. Number three, we talked about an ordinance to amend the NBMC and remove no protest agreement about sewer. Number four, we talked about a resolution approving construction contract with Becker Blacktop LLC for Pavement Overlay Capital Project. Uh, number five, we talked about resolution approving construction contract with Transportation Systems Incorporated for 2024 RRFB Capital Project slash Transportation. Number six, we talked about a resolution approving bill for sale for 13-lot East Grove Subdivision, a private development. Number seven, we talked about a resolution approving bill for sale of 11-lot West Grove Subdivision Private Development. Number eight, we talked about introduction to city's six-year capital improvement plan, CIP. And number nine, discuss a possible downtown parking garage, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr., uh, Mr. Allen, right next to me, Mayor Protem, would you kindly provide the work study report, please?
Absolutely. Uh, City of, uh, North Bend had our work study July 23rd. We talked about the 2025 to 2030 financial rig forecast, had a browsing conversation about that, and then a conversation about a fiscal sustainably alternative number four. Um, and then we adjourn.
Excellent. Uh, would you care to provide the report on East Side Fire and Rescue?
Sure. East Side Board, East Side Fire and Rescue Board did not meet this month. We did have a fact meeting, and we'll continue to work through with that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. As far as regional committees, do we have any interested, oh, here goes a hand.
So the King County Board of Health did not meet this month, and our next meeting is coming up shortly.
Great. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Ms. Tramalata?
No. SCA pick committee in August. Next is second weekend in September.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you for, for that. And Rebecca, Planning and Parks and Economic Development Commission reports, would you please provide? I'm sorry to forget about you. I, I could never, but I just did. So have at it.
The Planning Commission met on August 7th. At that meeting, we introduced draft amendments to the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations needed for consistency with state law. We held a public hearing and provided a recommendation to council on a draft development agreement with Middle Fork Property Development LLC located at Southeast 140th and 468th Avenue, currently owned by Puget Western. We held a public hearing and provided a recommendation to council on approval on amendments to the city's mobile home park regulations, NBMC 16.12, and associated amendments to NBMC 20.01 for consistency with recently passed legislation related to SB 5290 to speed up project review processes. The Planning Commission will next meet on August 21st for a public hearing on the city's accessory dwelling unit regulations, a public hearing on amendments to land use performance standards concerning emergency shelters, and an introduce, an introduction to the housing element of the comprehensive plan. The Parks Commission met on July 24th. At that meeting, they discussed public outreach at the Parks Commission booth at the July 25th and August 15th Farmers Market, provided concept, comments on the conceptual plaza design for Ballarat Avenue next to William H. Taylor Park, provided comments on conceptual plans for Middle Fork River Outlook pathway connections, and discussed potential images for city garbage cans in the downtown. The Parks Commission will next meet on September 25th and host an open house on the city's shoreline public access plan being prepared by the city's consultant. The Economic Development Commission met on July 25th and discussed how downtown events such as block party can enhance opportunities for local businesses. The Commission also received an update about the cycling story map to promote North Bend as a destination for mountain gravel and road cycling, and to bring more visitors to downtown businesses. Finally, the Commission learned about the work of the Snoqualmie Valley Chamber Film Committee and to bring more film production to the community. The Commission will next meet on August 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Demming. Uh, moving on to the main agenda, uh, item number 13, AB 24-077, public hearing and ordinance vacating portion of Almway Right-of-Way. Mr. Moore, would you provide the report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. At the, uh, July 16th, 2024 City Council meeting, the city initiated right-of-way vacation proceedings for a segment of Almway in North Bend, which is located, uh, north of northwest which is located northwest 8th Street. Page 150 in the packet shows the subject right-of-way. In early 2024, Vector Development, who is the abutting property owner to this subject right-of-way vacation, approached the city of North Bend to determine if the city would be interested in vacating a portion of Almway. Vector offered the city $337,000, just over $337,000 for a vacation. And this offer was presented at the May 28, 2024 TPW Committee meeting. The city is the only other abutting property owner to this Almway right-of-way. There are several reasons why city staff support the right-of-way vacation. These include: One, the property owner is willing to pay the city for the 60-foot wide right-of-way. The $337,000 offer, this is a fair market value for the land per the city consultant appraiser, SOBA appraisal. The city could use these funds to help build or improve infrastructure in this area of the city. Three, Tanner Electric is one of the few, if only, nearby property owners who uses Almway on a regular basis. If the 60-foot right-of-way is vacated, the city will reserve 30-foot wide public access and utility easement on the outer or east 30 feet of this 60-foot wide corridor. Four, Tanner Electric staff were not concerned about the potential vacation, provided they may retain 24/7 access through the corridor. Five, Vector would increase its assessment for the Meadowbrook sewer yule cost due to expanding site area, which would thereby slightly decrease future Meadowbrook sewer yule assessments to the other 67 property owners. And finally, six, the city has no short-term or long-term plans to rebuild the former bridge over Almway, which is immediately west of the Tanner Electric substation. The bridge was closed in 2013 due to traffic load constraints and completely removed in 2023. Residents west of the bridge were in favor of the removal. The city staff recommend Almway be vacated for the amount offered. In addition, a 30-foot wide public utility access easement will be granted by Vector, the developer and owner there. Happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions from council? Let me speak up. Hearing none? Okay, Ms. Rustic.
Question is, were there any other parties interested in this property?
We did get one from the Northwest Train Museum that was given to council just today. One comment for the hearing. The premise of that was that you have to be an owner adjacent to the Almway, the right-of-way that we want to vacate. They're not an owner. So there was no reason to reach out to them. Other than that, there's no other property owners that we reached out to.
Anybody else from council with questions? Nope? Nope? Okay. We'll move on from the public hearing. Let's go. Public hearing on an ordinance vacating a portion of Almway right-of-way is now open. If any members of the audience would like to comment during the public hearing, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through a virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Do we have anybody tonight? Nope? No? Nope? Okay.
No one online at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. We are gonna strike that gavel again really quick. Public hearing on an ordinance vacating a portion of Almway right-of-way is now closed. Councilmember Colan, would you please make the motion?
Motion to approve AB 24-077, an ordinance vacating a portion of city right-of-way of Almway as a first and final reading.
Second.
Thank you. First, a motion made by Ms. Colan and second by Mr., oh my gosh, we got Mark down there, Jocelyn. Ms. Colan, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think it just makes sense. It's just vacant land and we'll get money for it. And I think it helps our city.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Jocelyn, do you have any comments to make?
It seems like a win-win. It is beneficial to the city as stated by Councilmember Colan.
Thank you. The motion before us is to approve AB 24-0-
Mayor, did you want to ask council if any?
Of course. Why wouldn't I? That would be thoughtful of me. Okay, anybody from council have any questions or comments to make, to add? Want to miss anybody? Nobody? Okay. We're gonna jump forward now. The motion before us is to approve AB 24-077, an ordinance vacating a portion of city right-of-way of Almway as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's move on. Item number 14, AB 24-078, resolution granting water easement to Salaw Water Association. Mr. DeBerg, would you be kind enough to provide that report?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor and Council. On June 6, 2023, the city council agreed to a water supply agreement with Salaw Water Association. This agreement provides details as to how the water systems will be intertied and stipulates that the city will provide Salaw with treated water to use for potable purposes and Salaw will provide the city with untreated water up to 100 acre feet per year for in-stream flow mitigation purposes. Section 5.3 of the agreement discusses the potable water intertie, which is to be owned, constructed, maintained by Salaw Water Association on property currently owned by the city. The agreement did not specify which exact piece of property, so Salaw engaged in a feasibility study in which they looked at four different sites and found that the preferable site, mainly due to engineering constraints, is the eastern 90 feet of the Dahlgren Family Park. That provided the best pressures from the city side and the best pipe sizes for receiving the water on the Salaw side. So this easement is granted to Salaw for that property, the eastern, again, eastern 90 feet of the Dahlgren Family Park. Further, in section 5.3 of the agreement states, and I'm quoting here, "The city shall grant Salaw an easement and access license at no charge for the term of this agreement to install, operate, maintain, repair, and replace the North Bend way intertie generally consisting of a pump station, controls, and underground piping located on city property at a location approximately depicted on Exhibit B of the water supply agreement, and agreed upon in writing." So with that, I will entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBerg. Any questions from council, Mr. DeBerg? Nope? Okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, raise your hand, please, by the virtual format. And we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Have we got anybody tonight? Nope? Okay.
Your Honor, we do have a participant virtually, Mike Thomas.
Thank you. I don't wanna, okay. Hi, Michael. Michael?
Good afternoon. Good evening. Mike Thomas here again, 12:31, La Forest. Just a comment. The host prohibits me from unmuting and there's a little bit of a time delay on that, which is the reason for the delay on unmuting sometimes. I did have some clarifying questions, which I hope council may ask of Mr. DeBerg or other engineers present. I'm definitely aware of the importance of this intertie. Certainly, you know, this is vital to Salaw expanding, you know, its water service to, you know, to provide additional connections and growth for really the eastern side of the city. Conversely, you know, the city wanted to purchase mitigation water, you know, from Salaw. And it has its own intertie and interconnection that needs to be built near Salaw Wells, you know, 1 and 2, up near Rattlesnake. Some key questions I have, and perhaps council might ask, is what is the status of building and realizing these two interties? You know, the contract contemplates these have to be ready by June 30th, 2025. If I think about the mechanics of the agreement, Salaw needs to purchase water from the city before Salaw can reserve it to sell it back to the city. So I'm very curious as to the status of both of these interties. Obviously, I don't believe construction has started on the intertie for Salaw to receive water from the city. I'm not certain of the status of the intertie that's near Rattlesnake. And would hope that council might ask that question. Where do these stand and will these be complete by, you know, June 30th, especially the Salaw intertie? And second, you know, where is the city in terms of its water system planning cycle? You know, for 2025, as I recall, that is up for renewal quite soon. And I expect to see significant details on that. So, you know, briefly, where do the two interties stand in terms of their status and likelihood to complete June 30th of 2025? And secondly, you know, where does the city stand on its water system, you know, planning cycle, which really will have to detail, you know, the city side of this connection? Thank you. And this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Yes, thank you very much. Councilmember Colan, this came through your committee. Would you like to make the motion, please?
Sure. Motion to approve AB 24-078, a resolution granting Salaw Water Association a permanent water easement for siting of an NRT booster station.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tremolata. Motion made by Ms. Colan and seconded by Mr. Tremolata. Ms. Colan, would you like to speak to your motion?
I think we have been trying to work with Salaw and the city on water things for quite some time. And so this is the first big step we've made into making that happen. And so we finally have an agreement and we're moving forward and it seems great.
Thank you, Mr. Tremolata.
Yeah, I think there's very few infrastructure items in front of this council this year and last that are more important than this intertie. So of course, kudos to previous council for signing that contract. And passing this allows Salaw to hold up their end of the bargain. So we should swiftly pass this.
Mr. Tremolata, anybody else from council wish to comment? Mr. Kotov?
Yeah, this is a long time coming. This was under agreement with Salaw. And so it's important for the health of this city in order to get moving forward and have expansion on the east side of town, plus also give us the ability for mitigation work. So I encourage us to move forward and agree that it's a good move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wish to have a comment? Oh, Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just wondering if staff could respond to the questions that were posed about status of building and realizing the interties, both interties by June 30th, and your position, city's position on the water system planning cycle. If there's any sort of commentary that you could, or color you could add to that, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly. The status of the interties, I believe Salaw is awarding the construction of the booster station tonight at their meeting. Talking to their engineer, it sounds like the schedule is gonna be quite tight for meeting the deadline proposed in the water supply agreement. They've got some long lead time items that they're concerned about, namely motor control centers. I believe pumps they're a little bit concerned about. But they certainly are moving forward. They're making a very concerted effort to make that happen by the deadline. So keep your fingers crossed on that. As far as the city side of the mitigation intertie up by Rattlesnake Lake, we will be opening bids for that this coming Thursday at 11:00 AM and plan to award that project on September 3rd. We've got 25 working days in the contract. So worst-case scenario, we're middle of November to complete construction on that. So we will have no problem meeting the deadline in the water supply agreement. As far as the water system plan update, we are planning on starting that this fall. We are anticipating completion of that probably summer of 2025.
Thank you, Mr. DeBerg, for answering those questions. Anybody else from council have any more questions to ask? Nope? Good? Okay. The motion before us is to approve AB 24-078, a resolution granting Salaw Water Association a permanent water easement for siting of an intertie booster station. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? No? Okay. We pass this motion unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Item number 15, AB 24-079, resolution authorizing adoption of capital facilities element update for the 2024 comprehensive plan. Ms. Deming, I did not forget you. And take it away with your staff report, please.
As part of the 2024 periodic update to the North Bend Comprehensive Plan, staff prepared amendments to the capital facilities element. Amendments include updates to the service and facilities information from utility providers operating within the city, including water systems, sewer facilities, stormwater, transportation facilities, municipal buildings, police, fire, school, and solid waste service providers, and updates to policies addressing the provisions within the capital facilities consistent with countywide planning policies and with comments received from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. The Planning Commission reviewed these amendments at their May 15th and June 5th, 2024 meetings and held a public hearing at that June 5th meeting. The commission provided a recommendation to approve these amendments at their June 5th meeting. A clean version of the draft element is on page 171 of the packet. And the CED committee prepared some additional recommendations and their redline element starts on page 191 of the packet. The highlighted piece on the redline are the changes made at the committee versus the full redline is what went to the Planning Commission. There also attaches the Planning Commission staff report, which has the redlines with comments describing the changes together with any public comments received. City staff recommends approval of the update to the capital facilities element with the condition, as with every element, that the SEPA environmental review will be completed together with the remainder of the 2024 comprehensive plan prior to formal adoption as a whole of all of the chapters by city council, which will incorporate this element. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deming. Any questions from council, Ms. Deming? Okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to step forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. And we have anyone online, it looks like?
No one online, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Jocelyn, would you please make the motion? Sorry. Just jumped on that one.
On page 169 of the document.
I'm sorry.
Would you like to clean my screen and make reading?
I'm stubborn.
We're just trying to help.
Motion to approve AB 24-079, a resolution authorizing adoption of the capital facilities element update for the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Jocelyn and seconded by Ms. Rustic. Mr. Jocelyn, would you like to speak to your motion?
This is part of what we're engaged here in. Here as a governing body, we're, I think, the need for a comprehensive plan and its benefits are well understood. This is yet another chapter. We will vote on the packet in its entirety when it is complete. I appreciate work done by staff to this point in time to bring this forward and I certainly will be voting in support. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn, Ms. Rustic, would you like to comment, please?
I'll just add that we did a number of reviews and took into, the staff took into consideration comments from outside the city as well. And there was no pushback on any of the changes that were made. So they're incorporated here.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Any council members care to have a comment or two? At least one? Nope? Okay. The motion before us is to approve AB 24-079, a resolution authorizing adoption of the capital facilities element update for 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again, everybody. Moving on to item number 16, AB 24-080, ordinance amending NBMC 13.20 regarding no protest agreement requirements. Mr. Moore, back to you. Provide the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Currently, a no protest agreement for sewer is required when property owners want to repair or expand their private septic systems and their property is located more than 150 feet away from public sewer, or when they build a new septic system for a new home and their property is located more than 150 feet away from public sewer. When a new public sewer system is proposed for an area by petition or by city council action in the form of a ULID, the signed no protest agreements are counted toward the percentage of property ownership approving the public sewer. There are approximately 600 homes located within North Bend city limits that have private onsite septic systems, which are not connected to public sewer. A majority of these 600 homes are in the Silver Creek neighborhood, Old Sideview neighborhood, and the north end of Tanner Road, adjacent to the Middle Fork of the Snoqualmie River. If the property owner signs a no protest agreement, they are legally prohibited from challenging the formation of a sewer ULID, local improvement district or ULID, or a local improvement district, LID, for 10 years. And the no protest agreement runs with the property. City staff observed that approximately 95% of the no protest agreements expire upon the 10-year term prior to the formation of an LID or ULID. For each no protest agreement, there's a significant amount of paperwork to prepare and record both by the applicant and the city. Because approximately 95% of no protest agreements expire before ULID formation, there can be unnecessary effort, time, and money spent by North Bend property owners, applicants, and city staff. Right now, we probably have 10 to 15 of these no protest agreements running with properties right now. In July of this year, the City of North Bend Public Works Department staff met with City Transportation and Public Works Committee to discuss staff's recommendation to amend North Bend Municipal Code to remove requirements related to no protest agreements. And it was approved for the main agenda. City staff recommend amending the North Bend Sections 13.20.040 and 13.20.060. The relevant provisions to be removed are shown in the Agenda Bill and ordinance attached. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any questions from council, please? No? Good. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform. And we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Do we happen to have anyone? Bree?
We do have a virtual participant, Mike Thomas.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Can you hear us because you're on again? And thank you.
Yep, no problem. Hey, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest. I briefly, I am definitely for this change. And I emailed council with some additional comments as I have been active in the matter of county code revisions, which are coming. As a result, the state code revisions. I've been active in this since January. I do want to also thank Bray, the city's communication office, for telegraphing some communications from King County, asking for feedback of literally all septic owners in King County. ULID no protest agreements are amongst the most regressive things in existence, especially if you need a septic repair placement. By no means can those things be considered to be voluntary. Those things come into play when your septic system has failed or needs a very substantial repair. So I'm glad to see them go. I think there are other changes that may be needed in this code to really address fairness. One of the things I do want to call to council's attention, and it's actually as a result of working with King County. And this is a result of a study done by the King County Equitable Wastewater Treatment Futures Program. The county has a tremendous financial problem ahead of itself. There are more than 85,000 septic systems in King County. And the estimated cost to either repair, replace, or convert these to sewer, for some of the oldest systems, 20 to 30 years old, is $2.5 to $9 billion. Huge expense. The City of North Bend in this item has acknowledged more than 600. And really, in our area, there's more than 2,000 by the mapping. One of the things that's becoming very apparent is that sewer, unless it exists in the very road, is uneconomic relative to septic replacement or repair. The unsubsidized cost in this county study is $84,000 for a sewer conversion. A full septic replacement is $41,000. A repair is $6,000. This is exacerbating past economic injustice. Many of the county's areas received no subsidy for some of the areas that were challenged. But I think something needs to maybe go further. And the county is struggling this with itself is the cost of sewer is just uneconomic relative to septic. And this is being recognized in both in county comprehensive planning and in growth management requirements, e.g., the county may need to step away from the strategy of sewer-ing inside the UGA. So I'd hope that council may want to consider to go further in this area for, really for financial health and fairness to its residents and look into more fair septic code relative to sewer. Thanks, and this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Cohen, would you please make the motion?
Motion to approve AB 24-080, an ordinance amending NBMC Sections 13.20.040 and 13.20.060 to remove the no protest agreement requirements as a first and final reading.
Thank you so much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, motion made by Ms. Cohen and Ms. Torgerson seconded. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would just like to say, I think this helps the property owners. It helps the City of North Bend staff. And it's just a win-win taking a lot of messy stuff out of the way.
Thank you, Ms. Torgerson. Would you care to comment?
Sure, yeah. I believe this is a great idea because it's a no-brainer. It's using up staff's time unnecessarily and it's costing homeowners unnecessarily. And this removes both of those. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you so much. Anyone else from council care to make a comment or two? Mr. Johnson?
Well, I just want to acknowledge staff on this. My belief is this grew up from folks who, right face, dealing with this paperwork on a regular annual basis and realizing that it was a huge waste of time, money, effort, and energy that rarely led to any real benefit. And so the idea was floated that maybe we can change the rules such that we can save ourselves that time, energy, and effort. And here we are approving something that's going to impact the staff and their daily business and how they go about it in a more efficient and effective way and make us all better and cost the city less. And so, please, let's do more of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else from council? Nobody? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 24-080, an ordinance amending NBMC Sections 13.20.040 and 13.20.060 to remove the per no protest agreement requirements as a first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. It's passed unanimously. We're moving on to item 17, AB 24-081, motion authorizing amendment number one to Clark Newberg contract. Mr. Chau, what would you like to do? And I mean, it's nice to see you tonight, of course, but we're going to have your staff report and we're eager to hear what you have to say.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. In 2023, it was discovered that employee medical benefits were deducted as a post-tax benefit when it should be deducted as a pre-tax benefit. This has resulted in an overpayment of federal taxes by employees. And the IRS does allow for a three-year lookback in amending previously filed taxes. In March of 2024, the city engaged Clark Newberg, a public accountancy based in Seattle, Washington, to review the 2023 payroll and to correct this overpayment for employees. Corrected W-2s were mailed out to all employees of record for 2023. And Clark Newberg also has assisted in terms of correcting the 2024 deductions as well. This contract amendment would reengage Clark Newberg to complete the payroll analysis for 2022 and 2021. And again, at the conclusion of which, corrected W-2s will be mailed out to employees of record for those two years. This item was reviewed by the FNA Committee on July 19th of this year and recommended approval by the full council. Staff recommends approval of this amendment for Clark Newberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chau. Council, do you have any clarifying questions? Ms. Rustic?
I just wanted to confirm that this will be covering 2022, 2021, and there will be no further funding needed for any other successive years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with our city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Bree, do we have anybody?
No one online, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Okay, councilmember Elwood, will you please make the motion here? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve AB 24-081, authorizing the mayor to execute contract amendment number one with Clark Newberg for a payroll analysis for 2022 and 2021 in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in the amount not to exceed $25,000.
Mr. Elwood, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cohen. So a motion made by Mr. Elwood, seconded by Ms. Cohen. Let's see, Mr. Elwood, would you like to speak to your motion?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Welcome. Ms. Cohen, would you like to add anything?
Just makes sense.
Okay. Any other comments from council at this time? Ms. Torgerson?
I'm glad we're making the change. I mean, you don't want to do this to your employees. I'm glad we're doing it accurately now.
Great. Wonderful. Anybody else? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 24-081, authorizing the mayor to execute contract amendment number one with Clark Newberg for a payroll analysis for 2022 and 2021 in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney in the amount not to exceed $25,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This passes unanimously. Thanks again, everybody. Moving on to 18, item 18, AB 24-8082, resolution awarding 2024 RRFB Capital Project to Transportation Systems. Mr. Moore, back to you. Will you please provide this staff report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. During the fall of 2023, the City of North Bend Transportation and Public Works Committee requested city staff evaluate pedestrian crossings at three locations in town. The first location was the intersection of the Snoqualmie Valley Trail and Ballarat Avenue. The section, second was the intersection of Snoqualmie Valley Trail and Mountsi Road. And the third was the intersection of North Bend Way and Orchard Drive. After reviewing the existing pedestrian safety conditions at these locations, city staff concluded it was in the city's best interest to construct improved crossings at these locations using rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RRFBs for short. City staff selected PH Consulting to provide engineering design services in March of 2024 to install the RRFBs at these three locations in each direction of traffic. Engineering design was completed in June of this year, and city staff subsequently advertised these projects for construction bids. Bids were due 11 o'clock on Wednesday, July 17th, and city staff received three bids. The engineer's estimate was just under $273,000, and the low bid came in from Transportation Systems Incorporated in the amount of $298,485, which includes all applicable sales tax. This project is funded with capital sidewalk repair funds. City staff conducted the appropriate background checks in Transportation Systems Incorporated and recommend the award of this contract to Transportation Systems Incorporated. The Transportation and Public Works Committee reviewed this item at their July 23, 2024 meeting and recommended approval and placement on the main agenda. Again, happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for that report. Any questions from council? Mr. Moore? Ms. Rustic?
Thank you. So I definitely in favor of enhancing pedestrian crossings. My question relates to the engineering estimate that was completed fairly recently was approximately 9% lower than estimated cost than what the bids came in. Do you have any explanation for why maybe there was some discrepancy with the bids compared to the estimate?
Yeah, I think if you look through the bid tabulation that's attached to the packet there, I think if you look at the low bid compared to the engineer's estimate, it all, I think there's 20 bid items. They're kind of all over the board. Ones a little bit higher, ones a little bit above. It's a small, it's 10%, but it's a small project. Transportation Systems is coming from a further location, so their fee was a little bit higher. So I'm not concerned with the 9% or 10% increase. It's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other questions? Oops, Mr. Tremolata.
In that TPW meeting in fall of 23, were these three intersections specifically called out from public letters? Or how did we get to these three? Or was there some sort of analysis done through the city and these were problematic? Or?
I think they all three were specifically brought up by the committee. Yeah, and they may have been part of a larger kind of like sidewalk gap, pedestrian crossing group of projects that we had a list of, and those three were taken out particularly.
Anybody else from council? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Do we have anybody, Bree?
No one online, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cohen, back to you. Will you please make the motion?
Motion to approve AB 24-082, a resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the 2024 RRFB Project to Transportation Systems Incorporated.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tremolata. Motion made by Ms. Cohen and seconded by Mr. Tremolata. Ms. Cohen, do you have anything to add to your comment or comment for the motion?
Yes, I think the flashing crosswalks are very valuable in our area, especially with all our people biking and running and not looking. And it really helps me as a driver when they hit it and I see them. And I think it's valuable and will be great for public health and safety.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Mr. Tremolata, do you have any comments to make?
Yeah, there's one of these down not far from my house. It's been a huge value add to our neighborhood. So that was part and parcel of my question was I think these are incredibly efficient and provide a ton of safety. So I'd love to see TPW continue to look at other areas in town where these can be valuable because I think there's probably no better use of our public funds than public safety like this. So I urge us to pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Tremolata. Any other council members wish to make a comment? Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 24-082, a resolution accepting bids and awarding the construction contract for the 2024 RRFB Project to Transportation Systems, Inc. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, we pass unanimously. Thank you, one and all. Moving on to our last agenda item, number 19, AB 24-076, motion authorizing contract with CPSM for Police Services Study. Mr. Miller, would you please provide the staff report for us tonight?
Yes, Mayor and council, this staff report is found on page 99 of your packet. And as you will recall during the decision card process earlier this year, the city council identified the Police Services Study as a council priority. In response to that, we prepared an RFP. We submitted it to, I believe, six firms. And boy, you know, they're busy now because we couldn't get a lot to propose. But we did get a very well put together professional proposal that was reviewed by myself, Landi Lindell, on contract with us. As you know, she negotiated our last police contract with Snoqualmie and is very familiar with the subject matter and was very instrumental in forming a police department in federal way. So she was helpful to have on the review panel. Craig Schwartz was recommended by our city attorney. As a police chief and city consultant, he reviewed the proposal. City attorney reviewed it. Our finance director reviewed it. And we all agree that it was an excellent proposal. So we brought that forward. And due to the fact that we were celebrating the national night out, it would have normally have gone to our Public Health and Safety Committee. Luckily, we had a financial... Uh, luckily, we had a uh, finance uh, and administration meeting available to bring this to subcommittee, which we did. And they recommended that it be put on the consent agenda uh, for this August twentieth meeting. Um, the reason, the reason for the report, there may be some confusion from people commenting on it. The reason for the report is just to give a baseline to the council as to alternative service models, whether it be with the county, with Snoqualmie, forming your own department, or another alternative, that those, all of those models would be looked at. And you would have pricing and comparative uh, uh, kind of quality estimates of the service you'd get under each alternative. So this is being done uh, for your benefit so that you become better educated as to what it takes to provide police services, whether you're forming your own department or contracting with folks. And it certainly gives you a good cost comparison. So we felt that this was what you wanted, and we followed your direction and brought this contract to you uh, with this firm this evening. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions from council? Mr. Miller? No? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we invite you to the podium at this time. Um, if you have requested accommodation, city clerk and wish to speak, um, please raise your hand through the virtual platform, and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address for the record, and your three minutes to speak. Hi, Jerry. Welcome. Of course.
And I'm not going to go into everything, but what I just sat through this whole thing for, so that I could speak, is that I just want you all to know that there's so many people in this community that support our police the way it is right now. And I don't know all the details about negotiations with the city of Snoqualmie, and I understand that there are some problems with the city of Snoqualmie and North Bend and not being able to agree on some things with the police department or whatever. And I feel that if you were to just try to negotiate, which is coming up in December, I understand, that if you can just negotiate and come to an agreement, I don't feel like it needs to be fixed. There's nothing broken. The police department is doing an amazing job. In fact, they're even doing a better job since we got an annex here in North Bend. And the police, the, the new police that are coming in, they're excited about being Snoqualmie police and serving North Bend. And I just feel like we need to support our police department, and it seems like it's uh, it really doesn't serve a purpose to spend sixty thousand dollars to study to whether we should move to a different police model or a different way of supporting or or having police department here in North Bend or even starting a police department here in North Bend, which all of you probably know more than me, we don't have the money in the city to have our own police department. And Snoqualmie Police Department is doing an excellent job. I am a P C O, a precinct captain. I talk to people all the time about this, and I was so proud that we had the annex open up. And I feel like the crime is, is, it it's not, it's going down. And the police are really responding to the needs in North Bend even better since the annex was put in. And so I just wanted to put my um, uh, it's just not me that's standing here. It's people that I've spoken to, um, especially over the last couple of weeks. Um, we had a festival here at Mount Si. We had the Snoqualmie Days, and I talked to people about it, and all people that I talked to felt like the Snoqualmie Police were doing an excellent job. I don't feel like we need to spend sixty thousand dollars to do a study when it's going to come back that it really needs to be negotiation between North Bend and Snoqualmie, the cities, and come to a better agreement to both North Bend City Council and Snoqualmie City Council comes to some kind of an agreement to where we feel, we as a city feel like we're getting a good deal, and Snoqualmie does too. And I think you guys are all very capable of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else wish to come, uh?
I forgot to say my address.
Yes, thank you for that.
Jerry Taylor Suede, one four two two zero, four hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue, Southeast, North Bend.
Thank you again, Jerry. Uh, anybody else online possibly? Bree?
No one online, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Elwood, would you please make the motion?
Motion to approve A B twenty-four zero seven six, authorizing the mayor to execute and administer a professional services contract for a police services study with Center for Public Safety Management, L L C, in amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you. Motion made by Mr. Elwood and second by Mr. Tramalata. Mr. Elwood, would you like to comment to your motion?
Certainly. I I think um, the community for the, the emails that we received as a result of that engagement, we did pull this top topic from the consent agenda so we can have an open and transparent discussion. From my personal standpoint, and I think I'm in agreement with, uh, I think some of my colleagues are in agreement with this. This is not an indictment on our current police department, not at all. Um, sometimes we have to engage in insights and research so that we can go into those contract negotiations better informed. I can't recall the last time we did an assessment on this, but I want to say it's at least five or six councils ago, so it's been a long time. The, the agency that we've hired, the consultant firms that we're, we're hiring in this are highly trained experts, and they'll give us a lot of other indications on other ways that we can actually improve through our negotiations and perhaps even how we uh, proceed with, with our existing contract or even future contracts. But again, I want to echo my point here, that this is not an indictment on our police department. I think they're doing a fine job. In fact, our community survey results came back highly satisfied with our police services. Um, so I just want to make that perfectly clear. Thank you.
Mr. Elwood, Mr. Tramalata, would you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, um, I, I would echo uh, my colleague, uh, Mr. Elwood. Uh, I'd also say that I think everyone on council through all the conversations we've had, public safety is our top priority. Um, some of us, uh, most specifically myself, um, come from a law enforcement family. I couldn't care more about police services than, and then I do. Um, but we're also stewards of taxpayer money, and I think it's our job to do our due diligence when entering into one of our largest contracts that we have uh, as with the city. Um, and I think this, the group we have on board, I, I think sta- staff, they did a great job. Um, their resume is, is pretty extensive, and there's a number of cities on there, including Washington cities that have done this type of analysis. Um, so I think, you know, in order for us to make a significantly large decision with our taxpayer dollars, we need to do our due diligence. And um, I think by doing this, we're being good stewards uh, for our neighbors. So I would encourage us to pass.
Mr. Tramalata, anybody else from council wish to comment?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands, it's not the performance of Snoqualmie Police Department. Very proud of what they've done, proud of them stepping up with the uh, the center that they didn't get the outlet mall. Um, I think it's just more giving us information so that we can come to the table with some knowledge. Um, and I think that's just the key out of that. It's not at all. I mean, my hope is that it helps us negotiate something long-term and keeps city of Snoqualmie Police Department as part of our agency. But I think it's important for us to do due diligence on our side on behalf of the taxpayers to protect them and their taxes.
Thank you, council member, and Ms. Rustic.
Uh, yes, I'm going to echo some of the comments made by my colleagues. I am grateful and appreciative for our officers and staff at the Snoqualmie Police Department. Um, their service to the community over the past ten years has significantly enhanced the safety of our community. Um, and in my opinion, an extension of the contract is the preferred direction. Um, we value their partnership and um, our police force, with our police force, and we want to continue the work that's been done moving to the annex and at the outlet mall this past spring. The issue isn't the level of service. Um, the city of Snoqualmie is uh, looking to negotiate what the city of North Bend is going to be charged for the services. And the two cities do continue to work together toward an agreement. However, we do not know how much that um, increase in cost is going to be. And so as my colleagues have mentioned, this will give us, the, the study will give us the um, options and associated costs that's going to allow us to make the best decision for the city and the residents. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else from, uh, Mr. Jocelyn?
Yeah, this is a tough one. I agree with what's been said. Um, this is by no means an indictment of the current level of service or the police that we're lucky enough to have uh, looking after us here. That's the big deal. Uh, it is the Snoqualmie Police Department and North Bend contracts with the city of Snoqualmie. Previously, the city of North Bend contracted with King County. Well, Snoqualmie feels a lot more homey and close and nearby than does King County, but at the end of the day, the contractual relationship is absolutely no different in both situations. Uh, you know, we're King County to fire the sheriff. This council would have little to say about that. We just lived through a, a period where the city of Snoqualmie fired the chief of police. And we had nothing to say about that, no different than if it had been King County. Costs for providing public service, which is top of mind for all of us here. The costs are astronomical and have gone up, and we're about to get hit with a really steep increase in costs of services, not only for uh, police, but also for fire. And it's our prime, one of our primary responsibilities to look after your tax dollars, just plain and simple, straight up. Um, and I have paid attention and listened to conversations at the city council of Snoqualmie level and am troubled by the lack of information and honest appreciation for the past history of what, how we've gotten here that I have seen exhibited. And it's a real concern for me because the information is they're getting a real bargain. How come they're paying us a little? And we should charge them about three times more than what we're paying them now. And this is the conversation that's happening that I'm aware of. And it's twenty-five percent of this city's budget goes to the police department. And I don't have a quibble with that. But if it's going to turn into seventy-five percent of this city's budget, well, then, folks, we have a big problem. And it's coming, and we've seen it coming, and we want, it's because we want to maintain such a high level of service that we're contemplating and considering bringing in professionals to help us as decision makers and policymakers with a little bit of knowledge and insight to the history, and also people who live in this community and talk to the people who live here about what the path forward is. And the best thing we can do to make informed decisions is have available to us information, and information that I presently don't have. What's going to be made available to me is what the city of Snoqualmie thinks we should be paying them for police service. And that's not a basis upon which I will be able to make a decision. It just isn't. It's not enough. And I don't know where else to turn because that flow of information is not as readily accessible as one would think it would be. And even there, you have disagreements between what council hears and what staff believes and what the numbers really are and what level of service has been provided and how many officers were on staff or not in any given period of time. And there's been a lot of exchange of information because staff has been working on this. This isn't out of, this doesn't come from nowhere. Um, and we're in search of the best information that we can find such that we are able, as stewards of this community and the tax dollars that we have authority to allocate, what the best, best path forward is. And while I was not in favor of this from the beginning, it's a tough sell to ask to spend sixty thousand dollars uh, toward this end, but I will be voting in, in favor of this because of reasons that I've, I've, I've stated. I, I can't in good faith move forward and simply let Snoqualmie come and let, tell us what the bill's going to be, and we'll write them the check. That isn't going to cut it. It just isn't. We need to do better uh, on behalf of the residents of this town as decision makers to make the best decision we can going forward. And right, during my tenure here, the city's been uh, under, you know, different models of policing. And uh, a- as council member Elwood stated, it's been some time since the city has stepped back and come in and looked at alternatives for how we provide that level of service. No one is interested in lowering the level of service. No one is, to my knowledge, disappointed with the current level of service and performance of uh, the, the police who work on our behalf here. That's not the issue. The issue is a contractual one and how to best be in conversation with the city of Snoqualmie. It is their police department, and we're going to be contracting with them, I hope. This makes the most sense to me, absolutely. Economies have scaled and all kinds of other reasons. I can't imagine that there's a cheaper solution. At the same time, I can sit here in good faith, tell you that I know that there isn't. And that's what we hope to find out. And again, I've taken enough time, but I will be supporting this. It's one of the tougher decisions that I faced, but I think it's the responsible course of action for this council to take at this point in time based on what I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Anybody else? Um, Ms. Torgerson?
Um, a lot of people said, a lot of council members have said my same sentiments. Um, we love our police department. I mean, I, I, everybody on staff I know loves the police department. Everybody on council loves the police department. We love them. So this isn't about our police department. This is about a contract. And to what uh, councilmember Elwood said is that we don't, we haven't done an analysis in maybe five years, maybe it's longer than that for how to put one of these together. Um, so, you know, none of us here are experts on that, and so we want to find experts to give us advice. Um, like councilmember Jocelyn just said, uh, Snoqualmie employs the, the police officers, and so we have no say in that. Um, but North Bend can define metrics needed for our city's benefit. And the way we do that is we talk to consultants to tell us what those metrics are so we can have the best solution. And um, they can provide us with quantifiable metrics that will help us to evaluate efficiency, effectiveness, and safety of our police services, not only for our residents, but also for our police officers. Um, there's so much value in doing this. I think this is going to be long-term value over multiple years. Um, and then we also want to be able to plan for growth. I mean, we have no idea at what point do we actually need to have our own police department? Be nice to have that question answered. Maybe it's twelve, twenty years, maybe it's twelve years. But if we have some valuable, quantifiable information, we can plan accordingly. Um, and we also don't want to spend ten million dollars for a police op, for our, for a police department, right? And we don't have that kind of money. So we also have to be very uh, we, we have to look at our finances very closely and make sure all that goes well. Um, so I, I think this is, this is going to be awesome. I looked at the resume of these consultants. They're going to give us information that we didn't even know we, we needed to know. And al- also, this information is going to also help the, the city of Snoqualmie as well. It's not just us. So this is going to be a win-win. So this is, this is a, I, I think it's, I'm voting for this. I think this is a great thing that we're doing, and I think we're going to get some really good um, information that we will be able to use and hopefully, hopefully be able to come to an agreement with Snoqualmie on making an excellent contract that works for both sides. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Torgerson. I, did I miss anybody? Heather, of course, I don't want to miss you.
I, I'm just going to agree with everybody on council. We like this police department, and that is not the issue at all. We just want some data from the research that we're going to get that will help us make a decision. And that's all we're looking for, and I think it's important to get data and take a look at things. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, motion before us is to approve A B twenty-four dash zero seven six, authorizing the mayor to execute and administer a professional services contract for a police services study with Center for Public Safety Management, L L C, in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, passed unanimously. Once again, thank you, everybody. And we're going to move on to mayor, council administrator, uh, concerns and initiatives. Uh, Mr. Elwood, would you like to report?
Thank you. I, I'll keep it short, but I, I did want to echo my first sentiment, which is residents were paying attention to what was on the packet. They sent in their concerns in their email. And um, we took action and we pulled it, right? We need to have these discussions. So what I love are two things. One, people are paying attention. They're coming forward saying, hey, look, specifically with our police services, we, we like what we're getting. We've seen it in the survey data. We want to know what's going on. Can you please tell us? And we did that. So I appreciate all residents who ever pay attention to what's going on and reach out to us so that we can do things like that. So a big thank you to, to those folks. And then a big congratulations and thank you to our police department for what seems to be excellent hires. I, I love to see these, these young folks coming in, uh, top of their class and, and doing a lot of different things uh, in, in the community and, and beyond, and bringing all those experiences here and, and really building a and bringing all those experiences here and and really building a fine team. So so congratulations uh for your hires, uh, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood and Ms. Ms. Torgerson. Do you have anything tonight? Oh, my. Okay, Ms. Cullen.
Um, the first day of school is starting next Tuesday, so be ready for all those school buses and kids walking to and from school and just be careful and take care of our kids. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. uh Tramalata.
Uh, yep, school starts. That was my uh first one to go. Uh, it's going to be crazy for the first couple of weeks. So yeah, slow it down. Uh, secondly, out there, there is a survey which I would encourage everyone to participate in if you can. It's put together by Valley Pull Together about swimming lesson access and needs and and what have you for all of Snoqualmie Valley, a regional data set. So more data, the better. Um, as a note, SiV Pool was closed uh last week uh for some repairs, um, which is not great. So um, would love for folks to fill out that survey, get more data and uh continue to push forward the best that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Gattel.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Thank you, um, Ms. Rustic.
Um, I was just going to mention, school is going to start this week and uh uh there is a need for mentors uh for K through twelve, both bilingual, bilingual and English-speaking mentors. And so if you have an interest and can have some time to mentor a student, you can email beamentor@empower youth network dot org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn.
I simply want to acknowledge the the pleasure that comes from a little bit of rain we've been experiencing. It may dampen our summer, but it, uh, for those keeping an eye on the flow levels in the local rivers, it's uh refreshing and necessary as we move into the fall. Thank you.
Mr. Jocelyn, Mr. Miller, would you like to comment?
I just want to thank our city clerk for uh putting together the war and peace document that you got tonight. And uh, and our staff, there was a lot of hard work that went into this. I, this is the biggest one in the seven years I've been here that I've seen. And I also want to say that this is a great month for this city. Um, I worked, I I drove by and stopped for a minute at the National Night Out. I thought it was a great celebration, a really good thing for us. Um, I I worked the beer garden for the the most busy time of the evening for the Mount Si Festival and I have a a new respect for bartenders. Um, people were very uh eager to uh consume the libations and we worked very hard at that. And I I thank the Rotary too for what they do to help us with that. But it's just a great place to live and and to be able to have these things happening so often, particularly at the very end of summer where you want to party and have a good time before you go back to work. So I think everybody really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed working with it and um just it makes me more proud to be here.
That's very sweet. Um, any, anybody else? Is it my turn?
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's begin. Regional Animal Services of King County has joined the National Clear the Shelters campaign now through September tenth. All adoption fees for cats and dogs of any age are is just thirty dollars. Cost of a pet license. Festival Mount Si was a tremendous success. Uh, thank you to the festival committee organizers, our public work staff, city of Snoqualmie, uh, let's see, Snoqualmie and North Bend Police and Rotary and all the others who worked to ensure this successful event. It was fun and I had a blast personally. So thank you, everybody. Stage one of the city's water conservation ordinance went into effect on August fifteenth. To find out more about when you can water your lawn and garden during stage one and other water conservation tips, please visit the news section of the city website. Snoqualmie Valley Transportation Valley Shuttle, uh fixed route bus service connecting North Bend and Duval and all points in between will now start running on Saturdays and Sundays as of Saturday, August seventeenth. Took twelve years to have this happen. It's quite a astounding and welcomed um asset. Please visit the news section of the city website for additional information. Uh, kudos like everybody else tonight uh to our wonderful new officers. Welcome to our fabulous city. We uh really appreciate your efforts in being here and it does not go unnoticed. Uh, as mentioned earlier, school is about to come forward. Please be careful on your driving out there. I know there's a lot of excitement going on and the kids um are really, I hope you all had a wonderful summer and still continue to. Uh, National Night Night was a super great hit and uh I'm so happy that the flowers have been a hit along the way in downtown. So thank you for all the uh public comments that keep coming and we appreciate that and the efforts of our public uh work staff to keep them looking healthy and happy. Everybody have a great night. Uh, we are going to be moving into executive session. Uh, we will recess the meeting for an executive session to discuss the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one G. The executive session is expected to last thirty minutes as there is no action anticipated as resolving executive session. The videotaping of the meeting will now stop at this time. Thank you so much.